Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Pierce County Council meeting for the purpose of Council Budget Retreat. It's Thursday, November the 2nd, 2023. The time is 9:40 a.m. All members are present except for Vice Chair Campbell. Item number two is approval of our agenda. So any objection to our agenda is presented? Not seeing any, our agenda will stand approved. Kicking off our morning, this is our last time together in any sort of, I don't, uh, just our time to have conversation with each other and be thoughtful with each other and be able to express what our hopes and ideas are. You know, well, we have lots more budget meetings to happen, but they'll, they'll be sort of more formal. You know, time entertaining amendments together and debating good ideas together. I'm sure in very civil ways, and I mean that sincerely. Cause there's lots of good ideas. There's lots of competing interests for very scarce financial resources. But this is our last time to have this kind of conversation together. We've spent a lot of time really diving into the executive's proposal, hearing a lot of really good ideas from folks who do work every day on the public's behalf from executive departments and other offices. We've created, I think, hopefully a lot of space for councils to think about that, ask about those proposals being brought forward. Make sure that council had discussion to really make sure that council's priorities and council's ideas are included in this process here, how our ideas are already reflected in the executive's proposal or not in some cases. And how we want to craft this, this budget to really reflect the priorities of the council. So I, I really, while it's our last day in this setting, we have a lot of work to do this morning. I suspect we'll wrap up by, by lunchtime and give members more time to think about their amendment request forms that are due tomorrow to really put their good ideas on paper. And if we need to go into the afternoon, I don't, I'm not going to cut off the conversation. It's really important that council have thoughtful conversation together. And, and so, you know, the, the last bullet this morning, um, under council budget discussion, that last bullet carryover items and items not previously addressed is really meant to just be a catchall. What have we not talked about yet? That we need, that you want to raise up here. Maybe we talked about it before and you want to talk about it again because it's that important to you. It's really just a catchall. It's one more time. What do people want to express as, because next week we start running budget bills. We, our committees of the whole next, next week are moving budget bills out of committee to the whole to the full council. So next week we, we're back up there. We're not in this setting. We're back up there and we're starting to move budget bills out of committee to the whole to the full council. And then the week of the 14th, we are taking some things on final action and some things to the 21st for final action, but really moving them along, amending them as needed and moving them along. So I, I really want to thank folks for all the time you've dedicated to this process to have dialogue together and express good ideas and wrestle with attention when we've had ideas that sometimes conflicted with each other or, but we've saw a ton of commonality through these, through these discussions, a ton of commonality. And that's been really good to see and to be able to ferret out to so that we can make sure that those get represented in the council's budget. So again, at the end of our time this morning, there, it really is designed to be open ended time. What more do members want to talk about? Anything at all? Not just miscellaneous current expense and how we bring oversight to the budget. Those are the two planned discussions this morning, but we're going to create space for anything else at all that's on your mind. Okay. So Mr. Winesbury, we're going to, we're going to move right into miscellaneous current expense and community funding requests. This, the next, if you could go to the next slide in the packet, please. The digital packet came out last night as it always does. Thank you to our very hardworking staff. Our staff is working literally overtime. Not only to prepare for these sessions that we have the information in front of us to have thoughtful dialogue, but they're already working to take our ideas and put them down on paper as we hear lots of commonality. They're working very, very hard on our behalf and I, I know we all appreciate it, but please be sure to thank the staff as you see them. So we're going to, we're going to start this morning with the executive's proposal on miscellaneous current expense. And here in miscellaneous current expense, it's broken up into several different areas. And I think let's just do a high level overview and then we're going to come back and talk in detail and make sure questions get answered about this and that we have dialogue about this. So it's, it's broken up into a few sections. The, the first section is community allocations. About $5.1 million here as proposed by the executive. We're going to come back to this. Let's just do an overview of how this section is constructed. So 5.1 million for community allocations. Membership dues is the next section. So these are associations that we belong to. The National Association of Counties, Clean Air Agency, South Sound Military Community Partnership, Waco and WASAC. I've asked Councilmember Hitchens as our board member to WASAC to confirm this number and that this is an accurate biennial number. And I know she's working on that for us. Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens, to make sure that's the right, because there's a lot influx right now that's going on at the board about governance at the state association and dues. So there's, you know, while we might not be perfect because there's a lot of conversation that's in flux. I've asked Councilmember Hitchens just to ground truth that for us to make sure we're as accurate as we're going to be. Then the next section here goes into payment in lieu of taxes, PILT. And there's some reservations here for PILT payments. I'm sure Finance Department or Mr. Bokey can answer these if there are questions about this, but this is quite standard in our budget. Then some other miscellaneous current expense items. These kinds of items were briefed by either Director Robinson or Ms. DeMuth a, a few weeks ago. They, they touched on this in, in their overview and budget presentation, but here, here it is focused on and really called out. Again, I'm sure these are, you know, a truly miscellaneous expenses that don't fit nicely in a department or somewhere else. This is the, this is the, the miscellaneous, on purpose, the miscellaneous category of the budget. You know, if you can't remember what OASI administration costs mean for $3,000, $3,064 and you really want to know. I'm sure Mr. Bokey or Ms. DeMuth will be able to answer the question. Then there's, then you start seeing the transfers and, and transfers to different funds. So, so wanted to walk through the outline of miscellaneous current expense. See if there's any questions about anything or comments about anything. And then I want, and then I want to come back to the community allocations and have a very focused conversation about community allocations. Before we come back to community allocations, what questions or thoughts do any members have about the miscellaneous current expense portion of the budget as proposed by the executive? Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to ask which of the membership dues are mandatory versus voluntary for being a member?
I'll have, hmm, I, I, my understanding and staff, please correct me, the only one that's mandatory is the Clean Air Agency. The, the rest are voluntary associations that we choose to belong to. Is my understanding. I'm happy to be corrected. Finance staff is nodding. That's accurate. We are statutorily obligated to be part of the Clean Air Agency.
Get a bill.
Oh.
Chair Robinson with the Finance Department. The allocation to the Clean Air Agency is based upon our membership. And we are in an area of the state where we need to focus on having allocation of both policy and resources for cleaning the environment. So it is a obligation that we have as a member of that agency pursuant to state law.
And if I may ask, how, do we know how that number is calculated? It is?
I used to serve on the Clean Air Agency Board on behalf of another jurisdiction. They have a member, they have a allocation that is half by population. And it's so it's a, it's a hybrid formula they, they come up with. It's half by population, half by assessed value, property tax value, and it's a, it's a hybrid allocation. I doubt Mr. Director Robinson is that familiar, but maybe you are.
I, I know that there are multiple variables included in the allocation of the, the membership cost. And those variables, as the chair was implying, are updated on an annual basis. So that there's variability based upon changes in the composition of the population. I believe that in many years ago, there was also an assessment that was put in place for jurisdictions that had an attainment of air pollution standards. And we within our county were not meeting attainment standards in part because of a high volume of wood stoves that were operating within our county. Emphasis was based on reducing the utilization of wood stoves. And we then came back into attainment. So that had an impact upon the assessment.
And one more, if I may, if, would it be correct too soon that the cities are also paying into this as well?
Yes.
So all incorporated cities and towns?
Yes.
And, and the unincorporated.
Yes. And, and in our case, in the four county region, Kitsap, Pierce, Snohomish, King.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you. I was just curious on the cultural heritage and preservation. 3.450. What does that entail?
Let's come back to community allocations if we can, Councilmember Morrell. Let's just, let's make sure, I want to dive deep in, into this. Are there, are there any other? Are there any other questions about anything else here before I imagine we're going to dive into the all, all aspects of the community?
If we're just on membership dues.
Any, anything below community allocations for now?
Okay. Cause I would like to follow up with the Pierce Sound Clean Air Agency. And I, I guess ask for the 640, what do we get for that? What, what, what tangible do we get that isn't within our, you know, our goal for zero admission, emissions by 2035 or whatever our, our climate pledge goal is. So I was just kind of curious. And there again, I guess if it's a state mandate that we have to be part of it. Kind of a moot discussion, but, and also do we, does the state fund any portion of that?
Capturing the question and we'll follow up. Any other questions other than community allocations? And we're going to come back and go line by line about the executive's proposal related to community allocations. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I might need to just sit down with Mr. Bokey and, because I probably have a lot of questions, but these transfers that are happening, I assume these are dollars that we're getting in from other sources and then going to a designated purpose. But like, for example, under human services, I see the Affordable Housing Document Recording Fee Fund, and that's 302,000. But obviously we've taken a whole lot more money than that for that fund. Can you just explain a little bit what these transfers mean?
Yeah. And if we want to get into the details of why the transfers are occurring, but in the human services one, so those are all general fund dollars that are going into human services for, and, and I will, let's just start with the third one, criminal justice fund breaking the cycle. That's been in there for, you know, predates me. It, it was Superior Court and the, I believe the Pierce County Alliance. That's been in there for a long time. The other one is senior centers at a million dollars and you've discussed that. And then there's an administrative cost to help pay humans. Remember most of the folks in human services, almost all of them are paid by what, what fund they're working out of, right? And those funds restrict what they can do. So if they're doing anything outside of that work, then we have to provide general fund, funding for them.
So the, these are, these are, these are appropriations from a special revenue fund.
These are, these are appropriations from the general fund into the human service, into the various funds. Yeah.
Okay, that helps a lot. That kind of explains it. So they're general fund dollars that, that we're making a conscious decision about the level. Like Lake Taps Marine Patrols, we're putting general funds into the sheriff's budget, which we do a lot of anyway, but this is separate.
Correct. The Sarah, the sheriff's fund has, so the marine patrols, there's money in the regular sheriff's budget a little bit. And then there's the marine services fund, which is a special revenue fund, which gets money from mainly from vessel registration fees. The, the main purpose of that fund through the years has been twofold. One is to buy new boats. So it, it has to build up capital. Two, it has to, it pays overtime to the, the deputies that work on the boats. It's my understanding and, and finances here, those two lines, especially the vessel insurance support. I think you've heard. I think the sheriff mentioned this in their presentation or in a previous presentation to you. The, the insurance costs have gone up a lot on, on boats. For whatever reason, I guess they're going up on a lot of things, but specifically on boats. The vessel registration fees have not gone up and so, or not as much. And so we're, we're challenged. So we're taking general fund money to, to put it into that fund.
Okay, that's, that's really helpful. Thank you.
Another, thank you for explaining that and clarifying that. Councilmember Denson. Just to tease out a couple of other examples, Mr. Bokey, to make sure we understand this, under facility, transfers to facilities management. We're seeing that this is a general fund transfer to facilities management. So are we transferring 3.318 million dollars of general fund money to facilities management for 1501 Market Street Building?
Yeah. And I don't know that you've received any presentations on this, but yes, that's exactly what it is. So the 1501 market building and I'm, and I'm, and maybe the capital side can tell us what that's for. And I'm not sure what the vacant county owned space costs are there either. That's a, that's a different, we've, that's to pay. We'd have to get specifics from finance on that and we can get a breakdown. But the market building is probably in the transition between us being in the building and everybody getting into the building and the building being prepared. So we own the building now. There's cost to the building ownership, but I'll, I'll defer to the capital folks on that.
Mr. Taylor.
Thank you. So at page 415 of your budget book, it gives some additional information on that, on that transfer. It was an item that was covered or at least included in the, I believe the cover sheet that we had related to some of the capital items. It's 3.318 million dollars as Mr. Bokey indicated. It's to support the move and staff support related to the new building. It's my understanding that it's helping with the staging of the move, the operational support during the move. It's a one-time transfer just to facilitate, you know, the different departments moving into the building, that any kind of space remodeling or operational changes needed to support that. That's what the 3.318 million dollar transfer is about. And that, that brief summary is provided at page 415 of your budget book.
While we have you, this vacant county owned space cost, is that a pretty standard item? There's dollars in the budget. Mr. Bokey's saying he hasn't seen it before.
I haven't, I have not seen that item before. I wasn't in here earlier for that conversation. Ms. DeMuth.
This item has been in the budget previously. We've called it out separately. This is where the county owns space. The space is vacant. We need somewhere to charge those precalculated costs to, so the general fund provides support. These are precalculated costs that get paid to facilities.
Thank you. And moving down to transfers to planning and public works, we see the $1 million transfer from, from the county road fund to the general fund, the other way around, from the general fund to the, I don't know why I can't understand this, from the general fund to the county road fund for SR167.
That's correct. It's not described that way in the budget book currently. It's, and so you're referring to page 414 of the budgeted transfers, I believe is what you're referring to, where that information's provided. It says, general fund to county road fund transfer, and it shows $1,400,000. It's labeled as cable franchise fees, countywide language access.
I'm thinking about SR, SR167.
Okay, okay. It's been updated. Okay. That's what it's for though. It's a million dollars for that state Route 167 gateway project, a local contribution per the agreement that we have with the State Department of Transportation.
Thanks. And just for members' information, I'm all for making our, our contribution to SR167, even though this is like point 0001% of the, we've made the commitment, all in. I think it should come from somewhere else and not our general fund, and I'll be working on that. So it doesn't hit our general fund. Uh, Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. I'm finding information online, so I'm good.
Thank you. Councilmember Morrell.
Thank you. Getting back to your support of the 1501 market building. Is that reimbursable out of the bond money?
The bond proceeds are used for the purchase and the remodeling of the building. The bond proceeds cannot be used for moving cost or operational cost of the facility. So this appropriation is to cover, as council staff mentioned, the movement, moving cost and the operational cost prior to tenants coming into the building.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
On purpose, I'm just really wanting to make sure members have the time to really read through this list. See what questions they have before we come back up to the community allocation section. Director Robinson or Mr. Bokey, a few more questions. My eye is being drawn to the very bottom. Transfers to other funds. Dispute resolution fund, dispute resolution support, $56,000. Can you say a few words, please?
This is a historical support that we've provided to the dispute resolution center. So a small transfer of general fund support for that program.
Thank you. The Judson Family Center Fund, this is per inter-local agreement with the city of Tacoma.
Correct.
And then the Rainier Communications Commission Fund. This is again through ILA. And the amount that we owe for those services.
We're close.
Other questions about this before we come back to community allocations? Councilmember Denson.
I just have to ask, thank you, Chair. With the dispute resolution fund, great organization, but under the new procurement rules, is this okay? Can we call out a specific organization for money in the budget? I'm still trying to figure that out.
Here's provisions within state law for the establishment of the dispute resolution centers and utilization of their services. So this would be in line with a provision within state law.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Hitchens.
And pulling on the same thread is, because I know sometimes we have multiple places where funds happen. Is this the only allocation that we're doing anywhere in this budget to the dispute resolution center? Or are there other allocations from like in human services or courts?
Director Robinson?
There have been contracts to have dispute resolution center services be provided to the county. Contract that I'm recalling is a contract with district court for cases to be resolved through dispute resolution rather than by the court. And that contract is the one where this allocation identified in this miscellaneous current expense also appears.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the bulk of what they get is from charges for services, which is the court fee.
Okay. Cause it seemed much smaller than what I was recollecting from years past. So, okay, thank you.
Other thoughts, other questions? Before we come back up top. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The Rainier Communications Commission Fund, and I think Councilmember Hitchens probably has the answer to this question. I remember back when we were talking, we were negotiating the contract with Comcast. A lot of it had to do with RCC and the fees. And so I'm just wondering, does this money always come from the general fund or does it come from the fees that we receive through the negotiated contract? Know what I'm saying? I remember this came up.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for the question. And anybody in the room that's better at this, please correct me if I start going astray, but we get several different sources of revenue through our franchise agreement. And the funds are distributed through our agreement to the county and then the county has the coordination with the, with basically RCC and PCTV. And so it's peg fees and public education. I never remember government channels, so it's PCTV. And then some of the other funding comes just from our franchise agreement in general. And with the Comcast agreement, there was an increase in the fees coming in. And my understanding was that was reflected in this budget. I didn't see a huge increase, but there was an increase. And then to pay for the services, the transfer goes to the RCC and then that's used to basically maintain all of the technology that helps us run the shows, literally.
Thank you. Now that you're saying that, I'm remembering that the franchise fees, the $10 million, I think it is from Comcast, does go into the general fund, which then would make sense that this is paid out of general fund. Right, thank you.
Did I get any of that wrong? Summarize. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. That prompted me to look at the, the coinciding page. It has the charges for rev, services revenue is up 46.1%. And then what assets would be sold for 2,000? Not that that's a big deal, but I could guess.
Councilmember Kruber, if you could identify the page that you are.
31.
A, a variety of revenue sources are received into the general fund and they come into miscellaneous current expense. Miscellaneous current expense receives all of our property tax revenue, all of our sales tax revenue, various services and charges. And from, so this is where it's contained in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask either Mr. Bokey or Ms. DeMuth? I, I would just like a few sentences about the transfers to human services and make sure we are tracking. And why we need to do a transfer in the first place? What we're buying? Just a few sentences, either Mr. Bokey or Ms. DeMuth.
Okay, so I'll take a crack at some of them, right? So we've discussed the senior centers. And then, and then we're paying, so that's a million dollars. And then the senior center administration is paying human services to run that, that program. Or to run those dollars, right? And run those contracts. And that's about 10%, breaking the cycle. We've, we've talked about.
Can you remind me what that is? And I'm not.
That's drug court, right? For the Superior Court. It used to be in the Superior Court budget years ago and they moved it out.
But that's general fund dollars?
It was, it's always been general fund dollars. And then I'll let Ms. DeMuth handle the rest because the behavioral health partnership fund, we've been putting money into behavioral health and that's probably we have to keep with that because of non-splend. But I'll, I'll let her speak to that, the rest of them.
And so the first item in the list, the transfer to the Affordable Housing Document Recording Fee Fund, this is Pierce County's contribution. And so the first item in the list, uh, the transfer to the affordable housing document recording fee fund, this is Pierce County's contribution to the South Town Housing Affordability Partnership. Uh, the second item, behavioral health partnership fund, uh, the one point seven million, this is largely the insert program, the mobile community intervention response team. It also includes administrative support for that fund because the. The special revenue fund was set up largely to receive grant revenue, um, and much of that grant revenue has diminished over time. Uh, so it doesn't have funding in it to support their administrative costs. Uh, the human services equity, community engagement, this was the position added by council, the equity, community engagement coordinator. Uh, as well as some, uh, expenses associated with that positions, that's supported by the general fund transferred out to human services. And then the last item, the Veterans Relief Program Manager, uh, this provides general fund support for that position to allow that position to provide a broader array of services. Currently, funding, uh, within the Veterans Relief Fund is limited, I believe largely to indigent clients, so this allows. Allows that team to serve, uh, clientele, a a broader array of clientele.
And just in case anyone's just looking at this page, we do not just spend fifty one thousand two hundred thirty dollars on. Uh, veterans programs, we we should probably spend a lot, lot more. Well, I know we spent a lot more, it's it shows up in other parts of the budget and we probably should invest a lot more in addition to that, but this is not all we spend on veterans. Programs is the point, this is not the only place it shows up, this is just the general fund transfer. Um, can I hear just a little bit more about the breaking the cycle, uh, item and why it's not appropriate to pay for that out of behavioral health and therapeutic courts tax funds? I'm sorry, my package to you.
I would think that it is possible, we could look into that, we can also look into, I think this is a portion of a particular tax that was intended for this purpose. So we we can gather some background and provide that.
Spend the same amount for.
It's the way we've always done it, okay. I would ask a little bit more thinking about it, th- thank you. Other, other questions? Customer Hitchen.
Um, thank you, Chair, not a question, but just wanted to delay the Judson Family Justice Center, um. When this budget was put together, uh, had not received a grant, so I'm putting forth, they and then found out they received the grant, so there was a reduction in FTEs there. They now have a funding source, so I will be working with Mr. Bookie to get an amendment there. Um, and you are all aware that we've been doing a lot of work around DB services, um, kind of at a regional level, thinking about how we can improve our services. So I'm not sure what that looks like, for sure restoring the the reduction in staff, uh, through the grant. But one of the things that I keep coming back to is we're getting some recommendations about how we can do better around coordination. Um, and so I'm just kind of thinking about what that looks like, but we don't have the formal report yet, so, um. But the, a couple of the things that we've heard is having, um. Language access, um, for, uh, people experiencing domestic violence situations in the field, like through our sheriff's department when they go on calls. Um, the other ones are having people either associated with our courts or with the clerk's office who can help basically be that. Warm handoff to get them from place to place to place within county government as they're going through all the different. Steps of filing protection orders, looking at, um, if there's weapons in the home, if there's children involved. Um, dealing with the courts, dealing with the sheriff's department, or if it's not our sheriff's, other police forces, how to coordinate that. But, um, still trying to wrap my head around what that looks like, but for sure, since I have the funding source, making sure those will get put back. And I've already flagged it for Mr. Bookie, but just thought I'd let you all know, so it's not a surprise. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for your lady, that comes from Hitchen, and thanks for your work on that, on our behalf. Okay, let's come back up to community allocations, these community allocation buckets are the, what I would consider the newest part of. The executive's proposal, Director Robinson or Ms. DeMuth, um, did brief on this when they, uh, presented on the executive's proposed budget. This is how the executive proposes to do about five million dollars of community allocations, um, of miscellaneous current expense. Um, making sure we understand the executive's proposal, um, which is part of the the time together here. Um, the other time is talking about how council wishes to, uh, use scarce resources, so, um, I I. Councilmember Morrell was going to ask about one in particular, I I'm just going to suggest we we talk all, talk about all four of them, one by, you know, just quickly, one by one, so we understand what the executive's proposal is, so. Uh, Director Robinson, maybe you on behalf of. The executive to express the thinking here in these one, two, three, four categories. I know, I know you've you've shared this before, but, uh. If we can ask your patience and indulgence to do it one more time.
And the allocations that are identified in miscellaneous current expense are included in these categories. Uh, the categories were determined based upon allocations that have been made, uh, through miscellaneous current expense, uh, for these purposes. Uh, the amounts that are included in the categories are based upon a review of how much had been placed in these type of expenditures. Uh, in prior biennia. There was a document that, uh, we provided to council, uh, that has a description, uh, for each of the categories. Uh, the purpose, uh, that the funds could be used for. And then to be, uh, in line, uh, with, uh, current law. Uh, these allocations would be made available, uh, through a competitive acquisition process.
Thank you. Further questions about this? Customer Jensen.
Yes, thank you, the competitive process, will those be, will that be for annual grants or biennial grants? Just thinking about how nonprofits kind of plan or are able to plan ahead.
The intent would be, these are biennial appropriations, uh, so solicitation would be for a biennial time period, a two-year time period. And then contracts, uh, for entities that were determined, uh, to, or those that are selected would be a two-year contract rather than a annual contract.
Just a quick follow-up, so I imagine those RFPs would go out very early next year, right? So that. Yes, things are, things are starting to happen right away.
Yeah, yes, or 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 sooner, based upon, uh, action of the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, in in my mind, the council discussion is, are these the right buckets? Is this how we want to appropriate these dollars? Council has the ability to appropriate dollars in different ways. This is, this is a a proposal for us to react to, as I listen to all of the different conversations we've had over the last month. Some things might fit in these buckets, a lot of things don't fit in these buckets. I've heard expression of council wanting to be a little bit more directive in some cases for some certainty, so. Here we are trying to understand the executive's thinking and for us to see if it meets our priorities. Customer Morrell.
Thank you. Uh, thank you for sharing. Appreciate the explanation, but I I guess I'm curious to see what the intent of some of these programs are. Cultural heritage is one, that's a large amount of money to be putting forward for for what, what, what's the purpose here? And then you have food security of capital, so I assume that's for capital purchases only. And I know in in the exec's budget, he's got another allocation and there are one point two million for. Food insecurities, or insecurity, and then playground and recreation, I guess. And and there again, we can go offline, if I don't want to tie up a lot of time going through, but mainly the cultural preservation.
Director Robinson.
In the documentation that we have provided to council, there is an explanation, description of each of the categories. Uh, Chair, I could just provide a short statement for each of the categories at this point in time, if that would be useful.
Yes, please.
So, community events, festivals and memorials, uh, in this category, funding would be made available to reimburse direct cost to producing an event, festival or memorial gathering. Uh, providing specified public benefits. Um, this, um, being, uh, similar to allocations in this category that have been used by the city of Tacoma. Cultural heritage and preservation, uh, funding would be available to organizations that promote the preservation. And future vitality of history, culture and community within, uh, Pierce County. Uh, food insecurity, as Councilmember Morrell noted, uh, focus here is on capital improvements. With funding being made available to support capital projects for food banks and hunger hunger relief organizations. And playgrounds and recreation, uh, funding, uh, made available to expand playground. And recreational facilities known and operated by organizations other than Pierce County parks.
A follow-up on the playground, is that available to? Cities and other nonprofits, or we're excluding Pierce County parks from that?
Yes, it could be available to, uh, parks within other jurisdictions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, customer Cooper.
Thank you, Chair, I'm I'm looking at the same situations or the the funding for the heritage and the playgrounds in. Looking at playgrounds and recreation are very popular and they also, there are no barriers, language barriers, cultural barrier barriers. Um, I was going to write, to a playground, they are for everyone, so I I. I would like to see more on that and and from the cultural move over to the playground, because that also addresses this and it fits everyone.
You, customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair, I guess one of my questions is that this is different than the past, so I was wondering if there was a better explanation of how the projects were chosen. And I don't know if that ties into, so if this, if we go down this path, it sounds like there's an application. And then an allocation programming, we had our new bill, so just kind of understanding maybe what was without our bills, what was the intent? Is there an allocation committee for each of these, is it just the executive, is it coming to the council? Um, and then how does that play with what we just passed on Tuesday?
Um, as I understand it, uh, the executive would set up a process to solicit ideas and. Um, would be the decision maker with whatever advisors, uh, the executive chooses to advise on the appropriation here, that's how I understand. Without any other direction here, moving money around, different categories, a lot more specificity, more definite, more, uh. Direction about the decision-making process and who's involved and who the end decision maker is, none of that's in this budget bill. So what 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 you see is what we got, um, but I'm happy to continue to make space for Director Robinson to express the thinking, if I mischaracterizing it.
Anderson, under what the Chair has shared, and the administration of the solicitation would be with the departments that. Have responsibility for these type of programs. So, uh, some of the allocations, uh, we would anticipate would be administered by the Human Services Department, uh, others by the Parks and Recreation Department, for example.
And they would be through a request for proposals process, is the, um, proposal by the executive, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Chair.
So, looking at like the largest bucket here, which I also agree with, that I'm concerned about that much, and I mean, actually. We always could do more around older buildings, I have a school that would like to be saved, um, but the, this idea of. Is that just one RFP or is it multiple programs underneath that that's then created? So, because an RFP to do historic preservation versus an RFP to put on a cultural festivals. If you put out an RFP that says, come tell us what you want to do with cult, like, that's not enough information, so is it? Multiple RFPs, that's going to go to a couple different departments or it's it's just so vague, that's in years past, we've line item, we've known what the intent was. Um, and here it's such a big lump together and I know that. That the plan is an RFP, but I struggle between cultural heritage and preservation, like playgrounds I can get, I understand that. Food cap insecurity, capital I get, festivals I get, cultural heritage and preservation, I'm just. So, I guess, is is this one RFP or we don't know until?
As proposed, I believe these are four different RFPs, one around community events, festivals and memorials, one around cultural heritage and preservation. Another RFP around food insecurity related to capital and then a fourth RFP around playgrounds and recreation.
Thank you.
Customer Cooper.
Thank you, Chair, I I'm looking at the funding source and noticing it's like fifty percent less than the prior biennium, that's just because the way things are, correct?
Right.
To be.
Yeah. You know, I just want to remind members, this this historically has been the allocation of the council. The council has historically allocated. About these amount of dollars, um. Or needs that council members have identified in their district, you know your district best, I submit. And this is how you directed resources to solve community, to address community issues. As proposed, this does not come back to the council, if we approved it as as is, which I do not intend us to do that. But if we approve this as is, you would just be doing these buckets and away they go and. Um, you're not included in the decision-making, you're not on the review panel, you're not making the decisions. We've released our authority and we've released these buckets of money. These were the dollars that that council has historically used to invest in community initiatives in your district. Customer Jensen.
Yes, two questions, going back to cultural heritage and preservation for the first. Is, does this money include the historical landmarks and preservation grant?
No.
Okay, that was my first question.
Separate fund and a dedicated process that has its own, yeah, so that's not going.
Why this was so big?
That that's not going away, no, it's not, the different funds, good clarification.
Perfect, second question, given what you just expressed, Chair Mello, and the fact that we all know our community needs and. I think most of us would like to to, um. Take care of as many of those as possible. How does this fit or not fit with the bill we just passed last, yes, two days ago, seems like two years ago, Tuesday? About our community fund, we just passed that, so how does that work?
Let's move into that.
Okay.
Um, I don't, I think I'm calling, am I calling on Ms. Murray or, um, so the the next, Mr. Winesbury, the next page in the packet. Uh, charts out the decisions that council made on Tuesday. My intention has been to understand, um, I'm, I'm, I try to be as transparent as possible. But my intention is to understand what the community needs are by, through the budget request form process. We set up a community needs fund by, um, ordinance on Tuesday. After understanding what the community needs fund is, right, we've said to ourselves, no more than three point five million dollars for the community needs fund. So we put that cap on ourselves, no more than three point five. In my mind, the three point five comes from this five million. Um, and it gets, I I we, I I can work on finding three and a half million dollars elsewhere, but, um, it largely comes from here. Um. Members, uh, identify what their community needs are, we've, we've asked members to bring their best ideas based on what they know to be their district needs and priorities. Um, and we would put it in our budget bill by district, um, up to the limits that we've set for ourselves, no more than three and a half million total. No more than seventy five thousand dollars per project or program per per year, no more than one hundred fifty thousand dollars per project or program for the biennium. And this is council-directed, to get at council-directed priorities. Um, so that's been my intention. And, um, I'm going to ask Ms. Murray, because there's, there are lots of changes, um, I'm going to ask Ms. Murray to. Um, just make sure we're grounded in, uh, the decisions we made on Tuesday on our appropriation authority.
Yeah, I don't think you've really stated anything incorrectly.
What thing do you have? What thing do you have?
Marty's.
Oh, thank you.
There we go. I don't think you've stated anything incorrectly, other than I would say, you know, we're calling this the Community Needs Fund, but it is a program like any other program you have in code. Um, the same as like, like the Executive Safety and Security Program. Um, that change was made, you know, in at in council that it's no longer a special revenue fund. But we are calling it a community needs fund in the sense it's a program. So assuming the passage, you know, or the um signing of all of those. This is sort of the environment that you would work in. Um, sixty two changed general procurement laws for contractor services and that the direct. Um, uh, the ability to directly contact with or contract with a provider would be increased from the five thousand. Which is currently to twenty five thousand. Um, the community needs program was like, will allow you to do. Um, funding for those um identified uses, um I described yesterday in the range of. Uh, up to uh seventy five thousand a fiscal year or a hundred and forty nine thousand a biennium. So really kind of the range, and that's why we say here is. Anything over twenty five thousand, you have to find another vehicle. So it's either community needs or an RFP. Okay, because within the budget. With um the NOFA process sixty seven that you passed, we're not allowed to direct monies through the budget to a NOFA process. That would be need to be a separate ordinance to a separate fund. So um, so I just think. This is really the, this is a good representation of the landscape of your drafting.
Does this help, Councilor Denson?
Okay, so I understand that if we want to give an appropriation of over twenty five thousand between over twenty five and one fifty, it needs to be in this community needs forum. Or be an RFP. What, could you give me an example of? How we would give somebody less than twenty five thousand that's not in the community needs program? How does that?
We would just, we would just write it in the budget.
Just write in the budget.
Public purpose.
But it doesn't have to be in the community needs program. Okay, I think I understand.
Yeah, anywhere from, I guess.
I'm sorry.
So anywhere from zero to twenty twenty five thousand as a service contract, you could do it directly. To an identified vendor. So you could just do five thousand to um, she's Red Barn, five thousand, but you could do also now. Twenty four thousand nine 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 to Red Barn, and that can just appear as a direct appropriation.
Okay, so as we are working through our form here.
Nice to see you filling it out.
Oh, I have been working hard. Um. Chair, is it easiest for you that, I mean, if it could go in either place? If it's less than twenty five thousand, for example, do you need to know if we want it in the community needs fund or?
I think put, put your best thinking and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna massage as we look at all seven members.
Care as long as the money.
Yeah, your, your job is to state your priority. If you have an idea, state it. We're working really hard to find the right funding source for. The right priority and try to accommodate as many of the priorities of the seven as humanly possible.
And then just one more question, since these are due tomorrow, we've got a cap of three point five million. If if that's what we end up doing for the community needs fund. So if we divide that by seven, that's five hundred thousand dollars each. But I thought I saw something that you passed out maybe last week that said five hundred thousand total, like for all of us, but maybe I misinterpreted that.
Um. That that five hundred thousand was a bit arbitrary, was is meant to get, so I'm sorry if I, if I caused confusion and thank you for asking about it. I I don't know that we can afford five hundred thousand per member. That's why that section of the form asks for priority. We really need folks to prioritize. We did, we wanted to set an upper limit. Uh for you to get your best thinking down on paper. We very well cannot afford that. So that's why we ask for priority order. Um, there might be other things that. The council that we've heard from each other that we want to do. Let me use your rural transportation initiative that several members talked about yesterday. That might be a shared priority by a majority of the council. And we take it out of the MC, it's, it's more than one fifty, so it's not a community needs rates. It's more, I'm, I'm hearing, it's probably more than one fifty. So I can't put it in community needs. Depending on what members come up with. I know you all, many of you are thinking about this. Um, that idea in my mind likely needs to come out of the. Miss miscellaneous current expense bucket for this purpose, and we direct the departments to do a request for proposals. For the purpose that council states. Those ideas and others start that that seem cross cutting and um very important to the council. That that's, that that's where the art of bu- of budgeting, right? So uh. I I don't have a firm, everyone has five hundred thousand dollars to dent, to direct through the community needs fund because we're still thinking and hearing from members about. What are other things we think we need to accommodate in the miscellaneous current expense bucket to accommodate council priorities? I did, am I, does that help, Councilor Denson?
Does, it does. And yeah, so if I put something in the wrong place, you'll.
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna have lots of conversation. Um, and please, and prior prioritize. We need to know in priority order what your priorities are. So we can hopefully focus in on what's most important to each and every one of us.
Yeah.
Councilmember Earl.
Thank you. Um, in 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 looking at the. Twenty four nine 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 figure that we're all going to come up with, is that one allocation? Per organization? Or can we say twenty four nine 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 to, let's say, senior center for uh services? And then make a request for ten thousand dollars to the same organization for capital?
In some ways, I'll have to defer to finance, but I believe they've looked at it as a per tr- transaction. So the question would really be, if you said for capital, is that? In the same general bucket as like, are they looking at that as senior services? You know, um.
So let's, let's take your example, Councilor Morel. Let's pick on the ordering senior center. Um. Uh, maybe you're thinking, maybe the ordering senior center needs new windows, making this up, uh, and you want to give a. Um, an appropriation for new windows to the ordering senior center, and you want to make sure they have some operating dollars to do hot meals and programming at the ordering senior center. Um, could you give ten thousand dollar, could you appropriate ten thousand dollars to the ordering senior center for windows? And twenty four thousand nine to ninety nine dollars to the ordering senior center for hot meals and programming? How would finance interpret that, Mr. Robinson? Maybe the windows is a bad idea, but he said capital, so I'm, I'm going with his, I'm going with with his idea.
There have been interpretations of state procurement law, which we need to conform to. That specify that an entity cannot break up a allocation into multiple components to. Navigate through the the procurement thresholds. So what we would need to do is look at the specifics uh that are under consideration. In conformance with uh state Superior Court interpretations a lot. Is it?
I appreciate that.
Function, or is it something that's divergent function?
So. Councilor Morel, you, you could give fifty thousand dollars to the community needs fund to the ordering senior center to do. Whatever you wanted, the ordering senior center to be able to do with fifty thousand dollars. Ms. Murray, do you want to add to this conversation?
Yeah, I just was wondering if the, the capital component wouldn't be looked at as public work. Um, that then would not necessarily be a uh, an artist, because it, what you're looking at is trying to prevent artificial. Piecemealing of basically the same contract and that one is so clearly, I think, public work. I don't know if you'd want to have the senior center deal with public work law. Um, but that might be where you, you would look at it as a different allocation than an actual service contract. But it's just, it's not very clear. And so if you want to do the most conservative.
Straightforward.
Um, yeah, the most conservative approach would be twenty five thousand per entity for that biennium.
Or the community needs fund up to one fifty.
Right, I just. Thinking creatively because, you know, certain things line up or don't line up. How we could maximize the twenty five thousand if it is per transaction per organization, then. That would obviously limit us to twenty four ninety nine ninety nine, no matter what we try to parse out. So.
Yeah, I'm, I, I appreciate you asking the question, Councilor Morel, because I suspect others were trying to think the same way. So I think teasing that out is really helpful. So we have that common understanding. Councilor Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. And my assumption is that this would be, for instance, I'm going to say, what if something that Councilmember Cooper is on her list and it's also on my list? And it adds up to more, it, we go back to that original, so we can't, we don't double our money by both of us saying we want to do a community need.
Yeah, yeah. So again, another utility of the amendment request form, if both of you really want to support the Spanaway Family Promise Program. We're, we're gonna, oh, great, there's some commonality there. Um, uh, understand the amount that you all are requesting and. We'll, we'll find the right bucket of money to make it happen. If it's between twenty five and one fifty, using this example of the Family Promise Program in Spanaway. My sense is I'm going to suggest we stick it in community needs fund. If it's more than one fifty for the Family Promise Program in Spanaway, we have to RFP it. If it's less than twenty five for the Family Promise Program, okay, that's a little, that's a little bit more simple. But the, tho- those are, those are the pathways we have to make investments at the council's. Direction.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm looking for that commonality when I'm reviewing the amendment request forms. And trying to accommodate as many of the seven members requests. Again, and I can't stress enough, understanding your, your. Request in priority order because we have scarce resources and we are going to deliver a balanced budget. I guarantee you, we're going to deliver a balanced budget. So understanding your ideas and priority order is essential. Because we have to make tough decisions and we can't do it all. Councilor Morel.
Okay, I'm going to address the eight hundred pound gorilla in the room is what if any portion of what we did, the three ordinances gets vetoed? Mainly, I'm looking at sixty eight.
We will.
We do.
We will address that if and when that happens. I'm thinking council is going to draft a very appropriate budget. And is in alignment with um, with council priorities and showcase what we wish to direct resources to. So we've talked through, um. We've, we've talked through miscellaneous current expense as proposed. We talked about our. Um, thresholds and budget process for appropriation to external partners. How the bills we advanced this week relate and um come together to create the architecture to write this budget. Um, Councilor Morel, I, I don't, I didn't mean to give a non-answer. I, I'm, I plan on writing the budget with the direction. Um, that we gave three years. I'm, I'm always honest and transparent. This is how I intend that we're going to write the budget because I've heard enough from enough members. That this is in the public's interest. And I'm hearing enough ideas that this architecture. With the constraints we have in place, this architecture is going to work the best. To meet council priorities and community priorities. If we have to pivot, I guarantee you, I'm going to work my butt off to pivot. But this is the architecture that I think works best in the public interest and the architecture that we're going to be advancing a budget under. Other um thoughts about miscellaneous current expense and um how we're going about community funding requests? I'll be, you know, we've talked about this a little earlier, community funding requi- we, we had a good conversation about ARPA yesterday and some folks. Priorities may fall there per that discussion. Some of it will fall in miscellaneous current expense through many of these. Through what we've just discussed, there might be other ways to accommodate priorities. Mr. Bokey and I are talking constantly. As we continue to understand what council's priorities are to, again, figure out how we can accommodate our highest priorities. And especially where there's overlap. To meet mo- multiple council member priorities. Councilor Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we've recently had um two allocation, um. Allocations that come to the council that, that there were some concerns about them. We've not changed the rules, but. Solidified the rules around the process now. And so thinking about our senior centers and violence prevention. Is that anything that there is interest in working on making any changes around those two allocations? Because senior centers is in here and they don't have additional funds. So if we were to, within the new rules. It's, if we wanted to try and make a change.
Right.
I still not hundred percent around how that works, so.
Let's dive into that. So I'm preparing, so youth violence prevention, let's do that one first. We had a discussion with Director Moss this last week. Um, it was, I, I heard a majority of the council. Um, and believing that the process was not fair and every entity did not have a fair shake in that process. So I'm in the middle of writing a letter to Director Moss on behalf of the council, letting her know the council does not anticipate accepting the youth violence prevention. Requests as proposed by the executive, we plan on um not including those appropriations. And directing the department to reissue the RFP as quickly as possible, so that we can get the money out the door as quickly as possible. And that we request that they do that under the notice of funding availability process that council approved um in twenty twenty three sixty eight this week. So that letter is coming out from me later today to Director Moss on behalf of the council. That's youth violence prevention. Presumably, they'll go through the process to hurriedly redo a notice of funding availability uh process quickly. Many of them will cut and paste what they did. They did the work earlier this year. They'll cut and paste, get, get the art, respond, but now they'll be responding with. All accurate information and up to date information for all entities. Then they'll come back with a list of proposed um recommendations per the process as outlined in twenty twenty three sixty eight. So it'll eventually make its way up here, make its way to the Health and Human Services Committee. Under the provisions we created for ourselves of in ordinance twenty twenty three sixty eight. So that's youth violence prevention. I hope they can do that by end of January or early February. And I would just remind us that if that, that's what we do, we would need to. There's a follow on bill that we need to do to, to say youth. So it's one thing for me to put in a letter that this is council's intention, right? That the point of giving Director Moss the heads up is to, out of respect, to say, we're not going to wait to the end of November. For you to see this show up in the council's budget. It's, hey, giving you that, so that you can assemble the staff team now and figure out what you need to. Get the ship in order. But that's the intent of the communication, so that they, this is not a surprise. And know it's coming, so you can start organizing the staff team accordingly. We have work to do to formally say this fund, the Youth Violence Prevention Fund must go through NOFA. So that's going to take another action by the council. We can't just do that because I sent a letter to her. Senior centers. We have a million dollars in the proposed budget. Hundred thousand dollars to do administration. I've heard, perhaps there's others and we'll see what's in people's budget request forms. I've heard two senior centers, Graham and Ordin. When I, when I see the um. The amount that I think they are requesting, I think it fits most nicely under community needs fund. So an appropriation to the Graham Senior Center through the um community needs fund. My sense is it fits within a hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation. The ordering senior center is the other one that I think I've, as I've listened to the debate. That request seems to fit nicely within the Community Needs Fund. And that's how we solve those problems. If others want to advocate for their senior centers under the Community Needs Fund. Have at it. That, that's an appropriate place to do that. If, if we were to increase the appropriation there, it would have to go out for a request for proposals process. And that's going to be a lot more work for the department and it's going to be a lot more work for these tiny, small administrative trapped, trapped, tapped senior centers who work on shoestring budgets without professional staff to redo applications and paperwork and all the rest of it, when you could just appropriate money to your senior center through the Community Needs Fund. Save everybody time and money. That's my proposal for how we resolve what I hear as deficiencies in the senior center appropriation. Think all the other appropriations in the bill. Maybe not perfect, but there are some that get left out. Ordin and Graham, I think we solve that problem through our community needs fund. That's, that's my, that's my thinking. Thank you for, of, of those two outstanding RFP processes where council wants to make some adjustments, as far as I, I can tell. Customer Member Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the senior centers, obviously, there's money left on the table on the allocations. I understand it would take longer to do it, but they have the option. I think they only spent eight hundred of the million. They only allocated around eight hundred of, of the million. I'm not making excuses, because I know why. My senior center didn't get it and it's their own fault. It's not the process. And I think they've learned a very valuable lesson. Just can't expect things to fall into their lap. But there again, I, I would prefer that we just open it up again and use that funds and go through it again. Yeah, it's going to be a little more work, but like you just said earlier, a lot of it's cut and paste. So. But, you know, in the end, if they don't get their funding, their fault. And I'm not here to try to find ways to, to you know, I guess I hate to use reward their lack of following the process that they knew what the process was and they have to use the technology that's in front of them and not use it as an excuse that we used to do everything by paper. So anyway, tho- those are my, and I've had many conversations with them. So if they get anything, they get it. If they don't, they, the finger only points at them. So, thank you.
To make sure I'm tracking, you mentioned that there's money left on the table from the one million dollar assumed appropriation. What, what's the money that, what am I missing? There's no, all the million is appropriated in. Yes, there, there's no further dollars to appropriate unless, unless we move money around, which I'm happy to do and fully intend to do in other areas.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought there was.
I just want to make sure we're working off of, right, I think the way to solve the problem is through Community Needs Fund. Customer Denson.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with you in, in regards to the Community Needs Fund. I think that solves the problem very, very simply and our staff have, have a lot to do and Ordin and Graham need their senior centers. Some of those letters that we've received in the mail, handwritten letters have just been heart wrenching. So they, they clearly need this. I have a question about next time, though. So there's, how do we get that amount plus up for the next grant cycle for senior centers? We need to be doing more than a million dollars biennium, in my opinion.
So thi- this is a biennial number. They've used it historically. I think the way to do that is to talk to the next executive. The next executive will write the next proposed budget to the council. And so before the next executive proposes their budget, I think council should be having early conversation with the next executive about, about that being a priority and that they hope the next executive puts one point two million dollars, one point three, one point five, whatever the number is.
All right, thank you.
That's for Krueger.
Thank you, Chair. Just for some good news, I will get a new granddaughter sometime today. She was due on the twentieth of October, so. Anyway, back to business at hand. So is there not a category left in the ARPA allocations for our elderly and some kind of a, a category that senior needs can be fitted? Is that a word fitted into?
There's not that I saw. And ARPA dollars, you know, there are constraints, has to be spent. There's federal oversight over the dollars, blah, blah, blah. It's, it's a bit of a cumbersome auditing oversight with federal money. The color of the money is federal money, as you well know. I think I strongly recommend that we use miscellaneous current expense, general fund dollars to accommodate some of these needs. Putting, putting these small senior centers through federal audits and sub-recipient agreements and all this stuff is overly onerous and not a good use of time, in my opinion.
Wouldn't there be opportunities through the aging category in some sort if there were dollars within there? Because we're dealing with senior needs and disabilities and whatnot.
I think we do it through miscellaneous current expense to be the most flexible.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I want to make sure we understand too. So, but customer Denson, I suspect, you, you are several of you, I think customer Krueger as well. And congratulations, customer Krueger. That is very exciting. We hope everything is healthy and and just wonderful. We look forward to seeing pictures. I think one of the reasons why the cultural and heritage section in the executive's proposed budget is so big is it includes a reappropriation of a previous decision, decision of council. And let's check my understanding. So culture, heritage and preservation, this three point four five million is proposed by the executive. I believe a portion of that is a reappropriation of the Asia Pacific Cultural Center. Mr. Robinson, am I accurate?
The funds that were identified in each of the categories, as I mentioned previously, were based upon allocations and prior budgets. One of those allocations was the Asian Cultural Center. The measure that is before you doesn't presume that the funds are going to be re-appropriated to entities that had the resources previously. Because we were be going through a solicitation process.
And that's a big concern of mine. Thank you for that answer. It's an honest answer. It's a huge concern of mine. We've already made this commitment. Asia Pacific Cultural Center has been planning as though they have construction documents and permits and all the rest of it. Assuming we were keeping our commitment that we appropriated last biennium. And we need to keep our commitment to the Asia Pacific Cultural Center. And can't create this kind of uncertainty in this way. I will leave it at that. That's a bit, that's a big problem. But that, so, right, that, that's a, that's a big number. You've heard from Director Robinson about some of the executives thinking about how they came up, came up with this number. Of, of course, as a finance professional, he can't say that there's been a presupposition of any decisions. He's answering it incredibly honestly and, and directly on behalf of, of the county and the department. I'm stating from my, from my perspective, we have to keep the commitment we made to the Asia Pacific Cultural Center. They've been raising all the funds and we gave them a commitment last year. We know these capital projects take time. They've done their groundbreaking a couple of months ago.
How much?
Excuse me?
How much was it?
How much was the appropriation?
It was one point four or five million, which is why the number.
Yes, one point four or five million to Asia Pacific Cultural Center is the commitment we've already made.
And I don't know how much has been spent to date yet, so we're at zero. Okay.
We, we do have a contract for the expenditure of those funds during the current biennium, but as Mr. Bokey noted, there's not been a billing.
But we have a contract.
For this biennium.
For this biennium. And that contract could extend into the next biennium with a simple contract amendment.
I, I would need to raise that question with procurement staff for you.
So how's that work with TRM or any of our others that are?
The, the multi-year, so we have multi-year contracts with Tacoma Rescue Mission. I mean, the list goes on and on.
The chapter reappropriate.
We need to reappropriate the money. Mr. Bokey, we're, Mr. Bokey, we're going to, we need to figure out how to get the money to with certainty. So we're going to figure it out. We can't go back on our commitments. Other questions, other comments? Customer Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. One of the things that I noticed in preparation for the legislation we passed on Tuesday, I kind of went back prior to COVID and really looked at how MCE dollars had been allocated. And I have to say, the number one thing that I saw in there was senior centers, saving senior centers. So I think it's something to think about in twenty four and twenty five that we think about before the next budget of, if we're always having to come in and save the day with senior centers, then the system's not working. It's not sustainable. It's not good for our senior centers. I now as my understanding is that the, the RFP that went out that we are looking at is a two-year biennium with the extension. So they assume that they've got four years of funding. It can be pulled, but it's, it's a four-year allocation, which means our two senior centers that are sitting outside of that system. I don't know that we put another RFP out in twenty twenty five. I, and so that, those kinds of things are concerning and I don't know what happens there, but just wanted to say that just the historical look. I didn't push a button.
I, I did tell the deputy that I was going to time him again, see if he got a better response. He just laughed.
But, um, but it was consistently hundreds of thousands of dollars going out to different senior centers, sometimes directly like provisoed, like you will do this, or it was opening a new senior center. And so it's what we've had obviously hasn't been working and we've been using MCE dollars to kind of save the day based on, again, community needs. But I think not now, nobody has time, but I think being proactive as we move into the next biennium, thinking about how we can do better. As we've said a couple of times, we have a growing senior population. Twenty five percent of our population will be over the age of sixty. Senior centers struggle because staffing is costing more. And there's a need for additional staffing because seniors are trying and, and we're finding ways to keep them in their homes. So it's sometimes the only place where they get social so, social emotional learning, sorry, that was school, but social skills. Sometimes there's learning and, and meals and, and all of the good stuff that happens at each of our individual senior centers. So something to think about for the future, but just wanted to kind of add that as a perspective, because it was, it kept coming up as I was going back and looking at twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen was senior center, senior center.
I, I have the same observation, customer Hitchens. When I looked at previous biennia and MCE, I definitely saw that theme. And so, you know, when we were working together with customer Morrell to create the Community Needs Fund and setting those dollar thresholds, it's all really consistent. That's why the seventy five per year, one hundred fifty for bi- per biennium. Just looking at previous MCE purposes, flexibility for members, because you know your district's best. Many members can address their senior center issues through the Community Needs Fund.
Thank you.
Definitely was a pattern. What other thoughts do members have about miscellaneous current expense? Okay, I'm going to invite us to actually take a recess. So let's take a break. Let's take a ten-minute recess and come back and we're going to do general reporting and monitoring and have a conversation about anything at all and wrap up our budget retreat. Let's take a ten-minute recess. Okay, welcome back from the council's morning recess. We're still in our council budget retreat. The time is eleven eighteen AM. We're in the home stretch. And we're going to get customer Krueger to hopefully see her grandbaby today.
Probably tonight.
Maybe tonight. So we want to for our remaining time, we're going to discuss the provisions in the budget that allow the council to provide appropriate oversight of, of the budget, monitoring and oversight of the budget. And by looking at some of the provisions that have been in previous budgets and having a discussion about how we might want to refine them for this budget. That we're going to then remind council about the timeline that's in front of us between now and Thanksgiving. And the many opportunities for council to consider the various budget-related bills that are in front of us. Then we're going to open it up to see what more conversation council wants to have about anything at all, and then we're going to adjourn. So with that, Mr. Bokey, I'm going to ask you to and Mr. Winesbury to bring up the memo that's in the packet, please, on the screen. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bokey to begin discussing the provisions that are, have historically been in the budget for the council to provide oversight on monitoring and compliance with the budget.
Thank you, Chairman Lill, Paul Bokey, council staff. Just to, just to orient everybody, the budget is built into sections. The actual as, as sent up by the executive, all the numbers, the budget numbers that you're all familiar with are in, are section one. Section two is, as amended this ordinance, the twenty twenty four, twenty five Pierce County Budget Document is attached here too, as Exhibit A and incorporated here and by reference, and that is your budget book. So while you're, we're making amendments to the budget, will also be when we talk about FTEs and various things like that, be making amendments to the budget book also Exhibit A. You may see more exhibit. We're talking about adding exhibits this year for, for a little bit for simplicity's sake.
And, and to clearly state legislative intent.
Clearly state legislative intent. After that, there are a number of sections. And the document that you have here is something that was presented to you back in, in March by Mr. Taylor and myself. This goes through the sections and what I'd like to do is just kind of quickly run through them. And then there is one section that the executive has not put in his budget that you may want to add. You may also want to make amendments to these. So these are ones that we'll go through today. If nothing pops out, something may pop out the next day or two where you may want to say, I want a revision. I don't think it's working the way that we want it to, right? Some of these sections just, just plopped in. Others were in and were modified several times. When we get to the one about grants, that took years. And, 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 you know, and, and we've, I think we finally got it right, but there have been revisions to it. So the first one is, is section five, and that remains section five in the executive's budget. This is just the reporting, this provision is informational only and is for the purpose of budget monitoring and oversight. So this is the council receives the report on a quarterly basis, typically at a study session. You will be receiving the third quarter report on the November, the day before you actually look at the budget, the November thirteenth study session. So that is the quarterly reporting provision. The next page, section six, and that is also section six in this year's budget. And and this is again, the, another provision about on a quarterly basis, the subsidiary ledgers for all general fund departments and each other and each of the other funds listed, and that is provided by the by finance as part of their quarterly report. Section, section seven, which is also section seven in the executive's budget. All program expenditures contained in Exhibit A shall be funded in the amount shown, provided the county executive is authorized to transfer program expenditure appropriations. During the fiscal period, the county executive's office shall provide a quarterly report. The county executive's office shall provide a quarterly report to the county council, which represents the program budgets and the actual year-to-date expenses. So this has been in there. You can see they're enacted pre-2000, so this is something that really has been in there a long time. The provision is for the purpose of budget control and monitoring. Section nine, this is one the council added a number of years ago. This is actually probably, and I think it says they're enacted 2009. So it's been around for a while. We've tweaked it at times. This is all capital construction projects listed in the biennial budget shall acquire, shall require separate county council approval prior to the county executive designate or department designate. When the construction bid or revised engineer's estimate for the project will result in the total cost of the project exceeding the project total costs set forth in Exhibit A, that's the budget book, by more than 15% or $250,000, whichever is greater. And then there's some other provisions also in that. This provision was put in at a time right, as you can see, right as the Great Recession was hitting us. But prior to that, we were running into situations, especially with public works, where they were just coming in saying, oh yeah, this project is way over budget. Just because of the nature, we're all, we're kind of in that situation now. So like I say, it waxes and wanes and important during the Great Recession, all this, this went away, right? Because bids were coming in lower than the engineers' estimates and, and on, on any number of projects that we were doing. So this, you may see this once in a while. I don't know how many we've seen in the last couple of years, but you'll see these once in a while, and that is also in the executive's budget section. Section 10 is the grant applications. This is one you're very familiar with. Anything having a value of 10,000 or greater shall be tracked and recorded by the county executive on a weekly report of all such grants shall be made available to the county council. Further applications in the middle there is the $100,000 must be submitted through the finance department to the county council for review and approval prior to the submittal of the grant request to the granting agency. And that has continued, and you see any number of those in a, in a given year. So this is one you see quite a bit of. There is the $100,000. Once in a while, you know, they'll, they'll be, they'll submit something and I'll just say, well, that's below 100,000. You don't have to get the council approval on that. So that's up to you to move that number around if you want. That is section 10. The executive has also maintained that in his budget. Section 13 is, this is a newer one. This is the contract notification. I've got one in my inbox right now. Any contract or contract modification having a total value greater than $250,000, at least 21 days prior to signing. This is just a notification. They, they are just letting you know here, we're signing a new. You see a lot of the, a lot of the ones you get are public safety, or excuse me, Public Works for all sorts of stuff. I've learned all sorts of stuff about Public Works by some of the contracts they have and materials they buy to run the sewer utility and things like that. Some, we, now, we don't, we don't put human services in here because they do so many contract notifications, right? When council was considering this, they, they just said, listen, we would be sending you 10 a day or something like that. It was just, it would almost be like a full-time job basically to write up council notification requests and for you to look at them. So, so Human Services was exempt from this. This is also section 13 in the executive's budget. Section 16 is the department shall notify the Pierce County Council in writing on any position converted or the creation of a new position not denoted in the staffing summaries of Exhibit A to the ordinance. This happens with the quarterly reports and the executive has, has put those in there. So that's, you know, we have the limitation of, on the number of people that you can hire. But if you, if you take a look at these reports when they come, there are people just moving positions, you know, promotions and various things like that. Section 17 is, I believe was added, enacted in 2021. This is not in the executive's proposed budget. Executive shall submit to the Pierce County Council for its approval any contract or agreement that would establish new programming, new expenditures, or future funding obligations that are not authorized in any appropriation included in the biennial budget. So that item is not in there. So that's one that we would have to amend back into the budget. Along with that, there, the other ones that you're very familiar with are also in there, mainly the the one about hiring and vacancy and, and the ability also. So let me go to section 11. If state funds are provided to the Pierce County for state versus Blake costs, in addition to this appropriation from the general fund, it is presumed that the state funding will supplant the funding appropriated for state versus Blake costs, and the unused funds will be returned to the general fund. That is in this year's budget. I believe it is in the current biennial budget also. And then, and then the the one that we didn't discuss, but has been in there a long, long time, section 14. Unless otherwise specified in this ordinance, department shall neither employ nor authorize the employment of a person beyond the designated number within a fund or department without prior county council approval by resolution or ordinance. However, the county executive is authorized to over-hire in sheriff corrections and sheriff law enforcement. And I believe that that's a little bit of a change because I believe last, in this current biennium, I think planning and public works was allowed to do that in some cases, and that's been taken out. So with that.
P over, that entire section has been taken out?
No, that section is in, but planning and public works has been taken out, right?
So those are many of the provisions that council.
Oh, you think it's there? Okay.
Those are many of the provisions that are anticipated to be in the proposed, the council's proposed budget for budget monitoring and, and oversight. Let me open it up to any questions about these provisions, thoughts on revising any of them, additional thoughts on oversight and monitoring. Mr. Taylor?
Yes, I just want to add some clarification. So Mr. Bokey indicated that, I believe, section 17 that had to do with over-hiring within the planning and public works department wasn't present. It is the section 17 that has been excluded is, I'm hoping I'm not confusing folks here. It's a section, a new section that the council added in the current biennium budget that had to do with contracting for programs beyond what's in the budget and requiring approval. So there is a section that's been dropped. We'll get you the language so that you can see it, that within a prior budget that is, or in the current budget, that's not in the proposed budget ordinance.
Section 17, but it was section 14 is the, is the planning people in there? Because I have an old.
The department's indicating section 15 in the new budget ordinance.
Allows over-hiring in PPW.
Yes, for purposes of building permit, review, et cetera.
Okay. And let, let's be, let's be clear, because there's been lots of good discussion about over-hiring, especially in public safety, but, but also here in PPW. Over-hiring, but still within budget authority, that you can't, that no one has authority to over-hire above budget authority. This is a super important point. Director Robinson? Sorry.
Chair indicated Finance Department and Human Resources will look at any changes in positions from what was authorized in the budget, and we would not authorize a department to hire staff beyond the expenditure authority included in the budget. There are occasions, as council knows, that if a new grant is coming in and that's approved by the council and the grant request would identify additional staff that may be hired, we're authorized to include those staff for planning and public works. As Mr. Taylor indicated, the flexibility was placed in the budget so that if there were an uptick in permitting, that the department would be able to hire additional capacity to deal with that increase in volume. You know that the department is also in the past hired contractors or utilized contractors to deal with that uptick in development applications, to mechanisms that they have available to them.
Yeah, the, the staffing levels for planning and public works are section 15 of the budget. So it wasn't my mistake. I thought it was included in section 14 last year, which allows the over-hire sheriff and corrections and sheriff law enforcement. Planning and public works has their own section 15.
Council meeting.
Can you review again which were in last biennium budget that are not, that the executive has removed again to some clear?
Only one. The, in current budget, there's a section 17. The executive shall submit to the Pierce County Council for its approval any contract or agreement that would establish new programming, new expenditures, or future funding obligations that are not authorized in any appropriation, including in the 22, 23 biennial budget or otherwise provided for in Exhibit A. So the purpose of the provision is intended to ensure that new contracts or agreements obligating Pierce County to current fiscal year or future fiscal year programming or expenditures not be executed if there is no corresponding appropriation in the Pierce County budget or otherwise provided for in the budget. Council approval is required in those instances where there is no corresponding appropriation or other provision in the budget.
So by not having that in there, what does that mean? Like what would be an example of that happening?
I don't know how many we've gotten of these.
I, I can't think of one, so that's why I was like.
So like, if I, maybe, can I address this or at least attempt to, and then Mr. Robinson and Mr. Muth can correct me. But most of the reporting provisions are many of the reporting provisions that are identified in this memo have occurred as a result of some event, right? Paul mentioned an example where there were cost overruns for projects that the council wasn't aware of, and then they became aware of it, and they wanted to have a process in place to ensure notice. This section 17 that Mr. Bokey referred to was a consequence of a discussion on a, a contract related to park services where there was some confusion as to whether or not a prior budget had funds appropriated and what the council's role in approving that program was. So the, so the council added this language to address that type of a circumstance. I don't know that that occurrence will ever happen again in the future, right? It might have been a one-and-done rare event, but that's what this is intended to ensure that where there isn't a clear connection between the, the budget and a, and a program being created that creates some kind of fiscal obligation on the part of the county. If that doesn't, is, if that's not readily apparent in the, in the budget or specifically authorized in the budget, the department needs to come and seek council's approval. So staff would recommend that the language be added into the current budget ordinance by amendment. Now, perhaps Mr. Robinson has a different perspective or has some additional comments he wishes to add, but that's kind of the history on this.
As we were reviewing these components of the budget ordinance, we, as Mr. Taylor pointed out, were aware of an instance that was of concern a few years back. We believe that the concern that's being addressed by this section is covered by the obligation that we have to ensure that departments are not entering into contracts into a subsequent budget period without authorization for funding into a subsequent budget period. So if you look at the contracts that are being entered into by the county, there is a clause that specifies the contract would not continue in effect unless there's funding available. So we're believing it, it's being addressed through the contracting process.
Thank you.
Other thoughts on any of these provisions? Other thoughts members have about how we go about doing our role of oversight? Council meeting.
Thank you. I think, I think I understand as far as the staffing, but I know that one of the concerns that's been raised is within the sheriff's department, the, the changeover of some FTEs, and we've clearly heard that the sheriff's department intends to add those positions back. I don't think they have enough funding currently allocated to them to, to, to hire up, back all those positions, but just trying to understand what would be the process if, if they wanted the 12 patrol and 14, it's some other number, 14 corrections. So if they wanted 28 people added back to this budget, what, what does that, I mean, I'm assuming it's not possible, bam, it's done. But like, what, what, what would happen if they did come up to council in September of 2024 and said, okay, we're here, you need to put these positions back? Like, what's that look like?
They would have to ask for a supplemental budget to get the authority to hire the additional people. And we would also have to look at the amount of dollars that it would cost. So if you're, if they're doing permanent hires, right, it would, it would radically change. So that would take a supplemental budget.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks for bringing that example forward so we can understand really what's going on here. Other thoughts on these budget monitoring and oversight provisions? As a reminder, these sections will show up in the council's budget. Like anything else, they are subject to amendment. If the, as you further think about this, if you think there's a better way for the legislative branch to provide its proper oversight and monitoring role, there, there will be sections in the budget bill. Like what we just walked through, and it's, it's there for, it's there for reference in this packet, and it'll, and it'll be in the budget bill. Okay. Well, Mr. Bokey, and Mr. Winesbury, we are now at the section of the packet right after this memo. We, we've put in the memo an early draft of the November 14th meeting agenda rule. I want to be really clear. Rules has not approved this meeting agenda. This is the preliminary meeting agenda that will go before rules here shortly, just to give folks a sense of what's stacking up.
How many pages?
On November 14th. And so we're getting into making sure that all members of the council have a sense of the very busy three weeks ahead of us between now and Thanksgiving. We, we talked yesterday about November 8th and 9th, next, next week. We talked yesterday about November 8th and 9th. We have two committee of the holes next week. Remember, our most of our budget bills are in committee of the hole. Committee of the hole needs to move them out of committee of the hole to the full council. So as a reminder, we talked about this yesterday. Wednesday, committee of the hole will be talking about council amendment number one to the budget. And we'll be talking about the transportation improvement program and the capital facilities plan. And we can move them out on the 8th to full council. The intent is to carry most of them over to the next day, the 9th, and move them out of committee of the hole to the full council for the 14th. So all those budget bills that we talk about next Wednesday and Thursday, the plan is to move them to the full council for November 4, to November 14th. Soon I'm going to ask Mr. Bokey to walk us through everything that is stacking up on November 14th. And November 14th and November 21 are, are going to look largely similar because on purpose, we carry forward. So things that are up on November 14th are available for amendment. Some things we might choose to, okay, we're done with this. We can, it's, it's up for final consideration, and we might be able to be done with it. Other items, like the big budget bill, we've said to ourselves, we want to give maximum transparency to the public, and we want to make sure members have multiple opportunities to amend, and the public has maximum opportunity to understand what's in here and make comment. So as an example, the budget bill, the plan is to move it out of committee of the hole next week to the full council on the 14th. We'll have a public hearing on it on the 14th. It's up for amendment by any council member on the 14th. It's up for amendment by any council member on the fourteenth. And I'm going to recommend to council that we continue it to the meeting of November twenty-first. Again, all in the spirit of multiple opportunities for members to make amendment and for the public to understand what's here and make public comment. That's an example. Many of these other meaty budget bills, I'll likely, the plan is to do the same. Again, maximum transparency, maximum opportunity for members to be comfortable with it and make amendment to it. So the the agenda of November fourteenth is going to look awfully similar to the agenda of November twenty-first for that purpose. Mr. Bokey, can you walk us through what we have stacking up so far for November fourteenth?
Thank you, Chairman, Paul Bokey, council staff. So we'll begin with the ordinances. So proposal number twenty twenty-three forty-three. This is accepting the recommendations of the the Salary Classification Commission or the Pierce County Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. This was forwarded with a recommendation at rules and operations on October ninth with no recommend without recommendation at rules and operations on October ninth, twenty twenty-three. So that is the elected officials salary one. And and I and I do want to state, I know a number of items, a lot of these fee ordinances that you're going to see have been moved directly from committee to final. Thank you very much for doing that because that saves it, that really unclogs. You saw you saw the the agendas for the yesterday, the agendas for the 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 final committees of the whole, and they're much less clogged than they would be. You would see all these, traditionally, you would have seen all of these at committee of the whole on the eighth and the ninth. So so thank you very much because then these can now now go directly to final.
And this here's an example, the salaries for countywide electeds. If if a member wants to hold this one over to the twenty-first, I'm very open to that. If a member wants to amend on the fourteenth or amend on twenty-first, that's your prerogative. If we feel comfortable, okay, this is set, then and council feels very comfortable doing final on November fourteenth, then let's do final. But if there's any hesitation and folks want to think about it again, we'll continue it to the twenty-first. This is one that kind of, it's really up to the body. How comfortable is the body finaling this one as an example? There's others where I'm really clear that my recommendation is going to be, we continue to the twenty-first for for more conversation, for more public transparency. Let's pause here. Councilor Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Just to to make sure that I'm following along, we have several in here that have budget implications, though, so we can't. If we delay them, like, like, for instance, the third one, which is
Jail rates.
Jail rates, if we decided to amend that to a lower amount, or I'm not saying we're going to, by the way, but let's say we mess with that, there are implications to our overall budget. So is the budget bill the last item we're? Okay. Okay.
It all relates.
Okay. And I'm not suggesting we do those things to our poor staff, but I just, that's one of the reasons, I think, to any of these that we can get out of the way. Then there's surety as we go into the twenty-first. But especially the ones that are revenue, either generators or or they cost us money other than the budget, but we'll see what happens.
And and I would also know that you'll be taking public comment on all these. So this is a public hearing for everybody. So this could be a long evening, depending on what how much public comment you get. Proposal number two there, twenty twenty-three forty-five is the cost of living wage adjustments for non-represented employees. This was given a due pass recommendation at rules and operations on October twenty-third. Item number three is amending the jail incarceration rates. And that has been given a due pass on the October twenty-third public safety meeting. Number four is parks and rec- parks and recreation fee, and that was given a due pass recommendation at the October sixteenth Community Development Committee. Proposal number five, twenty twenty-three fifty-one S is Parks Impact Fees. And so you'll see different people's names also. So if you have any questions, you can talk to those con councils contact people. So I apologize, I haven't been mentioning their names. In the case of the parks fees and the parks impact fees, it would be Mike Kruger. Twenty twenty-three fifty-two S is the Transportation Improvement Plan. And that's Mr. Swanson and Taylor. Twenty twenty-three fifty-three, the rate changes for the sewer. That was passed out of EIDC on October thirty-first. Item number eight is the sewer improvement program or the SIP. That's Mr. Swanson. Item number nine is Pierce County Airport's lease rates and rental fees. It was given a due pass recommendation to EIDC on October thirty-first. Number ten is equipment rental and revolving fund rates. This is an internal service fund to the Public Works Department. This was given a due pass recommendation on October twenty-third at rules. Number eleven is the the fairys. That was given a due pass recommendation at the EIDC on October twenty-third. Number twelve is is your planning fees, basically planning and public works, assessor treasurer, development review fees. My name's on there. Really, I believe it should be Mr. Kruger.
I think it's because of the assessor treasurer, no?
Probably.
Both of you?
Number thirteen is the Surface Water Improvement Program or SWIP. And that's Mr. Swanson, Mr. Taylor. Number fourteen is in order approving the acceptance of an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollar loan from the Washington State Department of Transportation Community Aviation Revitalization Board for replacement of the Pierce County Airport Dunfield hangars. This is Mr. Taylor. The next one after that fifteen is the Capital Facilities Plan, which we had a lot of discussion about. Number sixteen, the next page, thank you. School impact these schedules. That was this is Mr. Swanson. This is to yet to be heard. It's going to be heard in the Community Development Committee on November sixth. And seventeen is the first of what we call the trailer trailer ordinances, and we have one resolution. So this is an ordinance of the Pierce County Council implementing the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget by requesting certain county departments, boards and commissions to take certain actions and setting an effective date. You've already had staff write up a number of these. These are the ones where you're going to ask people to report back to you. And so that's where these will go. We already have a number, a number of these. And that's where that'll go. The next one is a is another trailer ordinance. This is implementing the budget, amending the code powers and duties or responsibilities of certain county departments. This is where we actually go in and change code. We don't have any of these, I don't believe, yet. I haven't heard of any. Okay, so number nineteen. Remember, this year we have three ad valorem's. It's just, we we always only had one, but interpretation of of state law by the Department of Revenue is that we now need to do three. So the first one is the general property tax levy change. You're proving the the one percent increase. And that's for the the general property tax levy. This would include the veterans levy and the social services levy. Twenty twenty-three forty-seven is is approval of the of the levy for conservation futures. And twenty twenty-three forty-eight is approval of the county road funds levy. And those have all been approved at the October twenty-third Rules and Operations Committee meeting. And last but not least is the budget itself. We are, it has been mentioned, we are working on the chair's amendment. On this day, it's also available to be amended. So what what we will do, what I'm anticipating will happen is we will, you'll take action on the chair's amendment. If you approve it, you will be asked to roll it into a substitute. It will be then show up as twenty twenty-three forty-four S in front of you on the the fourteenth. And we and and we will amend to that document. So if you have any individual amendments or we have additional amendments, we will amend to that to forty-four S. So we do need a little bit of time because the chair's amendment i- if approved will be, you know, will take some time for the the clerk to put into form, right? So we don't, so we get the page numbers and the and the line numbers correct and the totals correct. And so that that'll take a little bit of time on on Thursday and Friday. But we will, staff will work with this. We've got until till that Tuesday afternoon to to get everything adjusted into that.
And and let me just also add, staff is working very hard on this. We've been listening really closely at all of these committee of the holes and budget retreats to understand the priorities of of this council. Not only is it available for any member to make amendment on both the fourteenth and the twenty-first, but we fully e- expect to not only deliver amendment one to the council in the proper form for consideration, but it'll will also have of, I think, a very easy to read understanding of what is in amendment one, how it differs from the executive's proposal. So you should be able to to read it and say, oh, that, of course, we talked about that seventeen times, like, of course, that or the, okay, that's there's the change compared to. So staff is working very hard on that notation to be able to consume both the legal document and the summary document and understand what's in it. I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Bokey.
No, that that's 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 great. I mean, the the I'll second the chair. He's he's done everything possible to make sure that there will be no surprises in it. I'll I'll be available to walk you through it at at any time once we get it written at the
Absolutely.
At the will of the of the chair. Okay, so resolutions, there's two resolutions. The first one is a resolution of the Pierce County Council repealing the planning and land services fiscal policy adopted. This is, this is Mr. Kruger, so he he's available to answer questions on that. And the second resolution is another one of the what we call trailers. And this is declaring certain county policy. And so this is where the council would and we've had a couple of discussions that have have considered putting that in, and this is where you would state a policy that you wanted to make sure was was noted.
If if you get, especially newer members, please, you know, ask away Mr. Bokey, Mr. Taylor in particular, you know, you might be asking yourself, what's the difference between one fifty-five? What goes in this resolution declaring certain policy versus what's the other trailer bill, Mr. Bokey? The ordinance, the trailer ordinance? Seven, item seventeen, sixty-five?
Sixty-five.
Yeah, sixty-five, twenty twenty-three sixty-five. You might be asking yourself, what goes in sixty-five versus that res- that resolution? Good question. Ask away. Mr. Bokey and Mr. Taylor can give you examples of previous, that sixty-five is an ordinance? The other one is a resolution. That matters. There's other history here that I really think you can get by talking to Mr. Taylor or Mr. Bokey about why you might put certain things there. These will get filled in. The the there's there's going to be substance in both of them. And so you can see what other members will have prepared to to the extent you want to amend into it, add to it, or amend what's there, it'll be up for consideration and amendment by the full council. Hope it didn't cause confusion, but I'm I'm encouraging, especially new members who haven't had to deal with these trailer bills before, do do ask Mr. Taylor or Mr. Bokey. They'll give you examples in short. Mr. Bokey, what? I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's it.
Councilor Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Something that would be helpful to me would be the budget bill clearly says this is going to go to the twenty-first, right? What are the other ones that we know have to go to the twenty-first? So if I'm working on an amendment for something that and staff is saying they don't have time or something happens, I know for sure, and I know there's always a chance that it could, but the ones where you just flat out know there's there's just no way we will, we know we're going to hear it on the fourteenth, and we know we're going to hear it on the twenty-first.
Mr. Bokey, do you have a sense of what I'm already going to recommend should be pursued to the twenty-first?
And I'm not going to speak for any of the capital items, the SIP, the capital facilities plan and various things like that. I'll leave those to the folks that have been working on it. From a budgetary standpoint, it'll be the budget itself. It'll be at least the two trailers for the two trailer ordinances. And I would imagine the resolution. After that, the fees and the wage and and salary changes are are really up to the council.
And the ad valorem.
And the ad valorem's and 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 whatnot. So, yeah.
So if a member wants to make, hey, I'm still thinking about an amendment to to something outside the budget bill, outside of the trailer bills, if you want to work on it more, we're going to, we'll continue it. But we're going to give members every opportunity to amend within reason.
Yeah, if you start getting, well, you go into public comment and all of a sudden something comes up about possibly could come up on fairys or something like that, like, and and it's like, wow, that's a curve ball that we did not expect. And then you can just move it to the next.
And then we just continue to the next meeting?
The twenty-first, yeah.
Okay.
We really want to put all this to bed on the twenty-first because we don't want our staff working over the Thanksgiving holiday. And they have a lot of work to package up our final decisions before we transmit to the to the executive. That takes days to do, days. They're very, very busy. So we'll we'll go and mark in, in addition to the budget bill, which other bills, like we just said, the trailer bills, we'll we'll add that notation. You know, to likely to be, whatever the words are, likely to be continued to November twenty-first so that we state that as as early as possible. The capital facilities plans, infrastructure improvement plans are up at committee of the whole next week. And in committee of the whole, that is an opportunity to amend. So the capital facilities plans, transportation improvement plans, it's up for to be moved out of committee of the whole, and it's up for amendment at committee of the whole. And we move it from committee of the whole to the full council on November fourteenth, as you just saw on the proposed calendar. Councilmember Rome.
Okay, and to follow up on what Councilmember Hitchens said, I'm assuming you pretty want all amendments in committee of the whole versus waiting to the last minute to drop an amendment. Not saying that we can't do that, but.
Strongly encouraged.
Strongly encouraged that we at least daylight it. Yeah, if you don't have it perfected for adoption, if if a bright idea comes to you or something comes out of the public hearing, it is super helpful to at least daylight it and be like, oh, I really want to buy another ferry, and I'm going to force us to spend fifty million dollars buying another ferry. The daylight that early so that we can.
Yeah, i- i- if you're thinking about something, vocalize it, and maybe we could walk it through so it isn't just dropped on us.
Thank you for expressing that. And Mr. Bokey, we don't have any super hard and fast deadlines about amendments. There will be amendments to the budget bill. I'm not going to do, I'm not going to deliver you an amendment one that is going to be perfect. I hope I haven't set expectations that it's going to be perfect because it is not going to be perfect. And it is, it is a, right, it's available for amendment. I'm going to do the best I can to capture a lot of the ideas I've heard, but it's not going to be perfect. We're working really hard on it. The the point here is that's an example of something we anticipate there being amendment on. Mr. Bokey, while we don't have super hard Mr. Bokey, while we don't have super hard and fast rules, the staff works very hard here. But what what is, what is respectful and reasonable for the budget staff, the clerk staff to have an amendment to the appropriate staff so you can work with the code clerk and do all the magic that happens behind the scenes for it to begin showing up for council consideration? How many hours or days do you need?
I I can only speak the budget. I'll let them determine on the on the capital side because there's a different level of complexity. So if if we assume that the chair's budget is the only, chair's amendment is the only amendment on Thursday.
And that is the intention. We're going to, we're going to move Amendment One. And so Amendment One is the new substitute so that can sit over the long weekend and have full public transparency. People can really absorb that. We plan to move Amendment One to the meeting of the fourteenth and it'll be available for amendment amendment by any member on the fourteenth and the twenty first.
So we would love to have them. I mean, you can have them sitting there waiting and and give it to us so that we can work on them Friday and Saturday and over the weekend. And in and into Monday, I I this is really, you know, I'm walking a plank here, but you know, later than noon on on Monday, really, so we can work on them Monday afternoon and evening. And then Tuesday. And then how you want to handle Tuesday, I'll I'll leave that up to you. But the the more stuff that goes on on Tuesday and 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 I'll be honest, the council hasn't always hasn't always adopted those kind of of deadlines, right? Tuesday morning, Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday evening.
That's why there's two bites at this, right? You have November fourteenth and then you have November twenty first.
Correct. Now you have two, now you have two bites of the apple. And and the other thing is, is that the later you get and and trying to push it to that day, that the the risk of a mistake begins to increase and and usually it'll be my mistake, right? And getting something out of balance or something like that. So or the wording wrong or something like that. So earlier the better.
Especially if you, especially if you really think it's not going to show up in Amendment One, I mean, start getting, start cooking on it now. If there's really something you haven't brought up yet, it's going to be a huge surprise. You think it's really divisive. You you, a fifty million dollar ferry would be an example that's not going to show up in Amendment One, with all due respect, Councilmember Hitchen. You have not asked for it. Anyway. You know, you, if if you really think that there's something you you haven't brought up yet, something that you really don't think is going to get into Amendment One for some reason, I would start working with staff now. You will have the a long weekend to absorb amendment, fully, more fully absorb Amendment One and think about amendments over a long Veterans Day weekend. But we've been talking about this for a long time, for about eight weeks now. So I really hope people have their ideas formulated by now. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. Something that Ms. Medley did last year, and I don't know if it was her alone or a staff prerogative, but the once Amendment One is there and we have our substitute, as individual amendments came out, we had that amendment tracker form. And I'm just going to publicly request that was incredibly helpful to keep track instead of all the paper. I'm hoping we aren't going to have tons and tons of amendments, but even if there's five, it's still a lot to track. They could be for different items out of the various bills. So having it all in one place was and I know that was a lot to ask. I don't know if there's other staff to help support that work, but it was really helpful from the dais to track what was going on and make sure that I was voting the way that I needed to to for my, the people I was representing, but I wasn't like off a page and voting yes on something that I actually was opposed to and things like that. So.
So Ms. Medley will do that. She does that as a as a matter of course, it's very important. And I would also note she is the the person who assigns the num- the amendment number, right? So I don't assign amendment number. No one else on staff assigns amendment. She assigns the amendment number because she's the ultimate keeper of of all the amendments and that would be for all the ordinances, right? Or the all the ordinances she's involved in. So the trailers and everything like that, if there's multiple amendments, she she numbers them all.
And what's her favorite kind of pie?
And what's her favorite? Well, we'll have to ask.
We'll have to ask her her favorite kind of pie.
Seahawk's gear.
Seahawk's gear. Seahawk's gear is always nice.
Okay, members, we've talked about Ms. Lena's current expense and community fund funding requests. We talked about general reporting and monitoring and oversight of the budget. We've talked about the budget schedule to come. We have an incredibly busy three weeks ahead of us. This is our, we'll have a lot more conversation together. But in this sort of really informal setting, this is the last time, we have lots of time together over the next three weeks, but this is the last informal time together. So let me open it up to see what else is on members' mind that they want to share as you go into writing your inputs into the budget request form and getting them to Mr. Bokey by the end of tomorrow. And before we head into committee of the holes to start moving things out of committee of the hole to the full council. Any other thoughts? Anything at all? Everyone's hungry, ready for lunch.
Or just tired.
Okay, well, members, again, my sincere gratitude for the extra time everyone has put into this effort together to have dialogue together, share priorities, have civil debate about different ideas and represent thoughts. Is there anything else before I close this out? Well, again, in addition to my gratitude to all of you for engaging thoughtfully here and the work we're going to do together in the next three weeks. While we may have differences that come up in the next three weeks, I think we've demonstrated that we can work really well together, even when we have differences of opinion. And I really hope we continue to work like that. It's been a really great collegial group, even when we happen to disagree from time to time. So and in closing, you know, we're, our our staff is now taking these ideas and they are working their tails off to put these ideas on paper for us to consider formally. We we move into decision making mode starting next week. And our staff has been working so hard and they're going to continue to work really hard up until Thanksgiving on this. And so, Mr. Bokey, Mr. Taylor, to all the clerk staff, the communication staff, the policy staff, the legal staff. We are so grateful. Not only you've done so much work to help us unpack the executive's proposal, take our budget priorities we've had and expressed over numerous retreats of the council. You've digested it in ways that we can consume it and understand it and have good conversation with each other. It's been a tremendous amount of effort by the staff team all in service to the council so we can really deliberate about this and really understand. We'll have more gratitude later. We do have a lot of work to do to make decisions. But there's been a tremendous amount of effort to get to this point. So I'd like my colleagues to ask us for a round of applause for us. So I don't see any other business. I I I would be remiss to, we have deep, deep respect and gratitude for our staff. We also have deep respect and gratitude for the executive staff. In particular, the finance department, they have made themselves very available every step of the way, and they get constant communication from our staff. And our staff can't do our job without getting good information from the executive branch. So not only to Director Robinson and Ms. DeMuth, we'll have more gratitude later sincerely. But all of the executive departments have put a tremendous amount of effort to make proposals to council for our consideration. And you've been patient and accurate and very available. And we we wouldn't understand this and be able to have, make good decisions without without your expertise and your public service. So thank you very much. Well, I realize I'm standing in the way of lunch, so seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council and Council Budget Retreat, we are adjourned.